I will call and order the City Commission meeting for July 6, 2020. Roll call, please.
Mayor Young is absent this evening. Vice Mayor Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
And Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
In vocation, we have Pastor Jordan Coops.
Jordan, counts.
Counts, with Park Avenue Baptist Church. He just can't hear you if you don't stand there, so.
Right here.
Yes.
Let's pray. Most gracious and awesome God, we thank you for your love. We thank you for your son, Jesus, and we thank you for your Holy Spirit that's with us today. And we ask in Jesus' name for your hand to be upon our community for healing of sicknesses and viruses, for protection from the same, and for peace and calm by your design. Give us your wisdom and let us follow you. In Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Amen.
Please rise and join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no proclamations or recognitions. We have no personal appearances. Public comments. This is a time where citizens can address the commission. Do we have any email? We can start with you.
Okay. Linda Clark, 1112 Remrock Road here in Eldorado. The city's Facebook page says, "We encourage you to wear a mask. I am very disappointed in this commission that three of you voted to opt out to not support the governor's mandate while wearing a mask. Kendra, you have grandchildren and health issues in your family. Nick, you've got a wedding coming up in November. You want your daughter, her dream day, to have a wedding. And Bill, which he's not here, has parents in that age group that's at a high risk. The biggest argument I hear on not wearing a mask, you can't violate my rights. Aren't you violating my rights by not wearing a mask? I have a right to live in a safe, healthy community. Our numbers for Corona keep going up. You are violating my and other family rights to have family members in a lockdown in a facility. Family members in a facility haven't seen a loved one except through a window since March the 12th. We want children to return to school in August. How can they return to school with numbers going up? Children need to feel safe in these crises. Let's wear a mask for a few weeks to protect our community. I want to thank Greg and Matt for your vote wanting to follow the governor's mandate. I truly appreciate you voting the way you believe in the best interest of the citizens of Eldorado. And Nick, I love your mask. I have one too. Thank you for the time, your time. And by the way, if you come to my place of business, you are required to put on a mask. And like the governor said this afternoon, the best way to get our numbers down is masks, social distancing, and good hygiene. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to address the commission?
Suzanne Scribner. I also wanted to come up here and urge the city to.
Address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, for a section here in Eldorado. I would also like to encourage the commission to adopt a policy for mask wearing in this town. We have citizens in Eldorado who have had Coronavirus. One of them was a friend of mine, and it took quite a toll on her and her husband, who was sick as well. He ended up hospitalized, she did not. This virus is deadly. It's getting worse. And if we do not take proactive steps, everything that Linda just said could very much happen. We may not be able to open our schools. We may have to do another lockdown. Eldorado economically cannot survive another two-month lockdown. You've got businesses really struggling now. We need to be willing to make the hard decisions as a community, and that means the City Commission take the lead and say, "We are going to be a community that will mask and follow the scientifically proven advice that has been given out almost from day run of this pandemic." And that we will be people who will mask when we go out and about and into businesses in this community. Please, please seriously consider passing such a resolution. Thank you.
Herb Llewellyn. I live at 1661 Pennsylvania, here in Eldorado. I didn't come to talk about wearing a mask, but I guess I might as well chime in. I saw over the weekend that Butler County's back in the, has red bars now. I went to their COVID site. Doesn't tell me where, so I don't know where the cases are in Butler County. That makes me sad. It seems to me like I ought to have that information. I agree with everyone else. I mean, it's going up. I know that, I think, five ER nurses and two doctors in the emergency room at Wesley got it. So I think people that deniers are just not using good sense. I think, again, it's not about my liberty, it's about protecting the community. And I'm guessing that three, if not four, of the people at the border are over 60, so you're in it. I guess I may be wrong. Maybe just you and me, Kendra.
Maybe just you and me.
But anyhow, so that's my two cents on that. I was disappointed that the county didn't pass it. I was probably more equally disappointed. They didn't tell me who voted for it and who voted against it. And so then, in my mind, there's no accountability when your elected officials don't say that. I've been following their website to look at minutes, and of course, they don't have any yet. So disappointed about that. And I don't know how many people follow it, but I am. What I came for tonight is several years ago, Flynn Hill Services came to the commission, started with the planning commission, and then went to the city commission and asked for a conditional use permit to build some group homes on, in this particular example, it's on Oak. When they came, I specifically asked, they were asking to be exempted from the requirement to have parking spots for employees, something that all businesses require to have in Eldorado. They assured the commission that, of course, it will be fine. Okay, I'm here to tell you, I garden across the street from one of the houses, and when I worked for the city, I used to hear people complain and think, "This isn't really the city's job. Neighbors ought to talk to neighbors." Well, I've been doing that since y'all gave that permit. I don't care that they park on the street, they have the right to park on the street. But they don't, and I don't, probably wouldn't even mind if they parked on the ground with my garden. But I do mind when they park in the driveway and block me from having access to my property. Not my property, my used property. And so every year I have to call them, and every year I ask them to not park in the driveway, and every year they say they won't. And every year I'm back, every year I'm calling. I just don't think it's my job to have to call them anymore. I don't know how many years I've been doing it since they got the conditional use permit. And I guess I think you all need to know that my concerns, when they went in, are valid concerns and are not being met. I mean, think about if you couldn't get into your driveway anytime you wanted because someone's parking in your driveway and blocking you from your property. So that's what I came here tonight to make you aware of.
Flynn Hill Services on Oak, you said?
The group homes are on Oak that I'm talking about. I think they have them all over town.
Right. That's the ones on Oak, okay.
And if you drive by, most of the time, their driveways are empty, and all their employees are parked all around. And so I suspect if they parked in their driveway, there wouldn't be a problem. But they don't. Actually, you probably drive by on your way over.
I see it every day.
Yeah. So anyhow, that's what I came about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Close public comments. Moving on to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? unanimous? As there is no old business, we'll move on to new business. Resolution establishing a public hearing for the West Central Gateway District Orchard Project Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Mitch Walter, Gilmoreville. Nice to see everybody again. The resolution that you have here tonight represents the second last step of the process of the Orchard Fifth District and project area. The city has previously created the district, and the city has, the city planning commission has approved the project plan. Now we're off to the step where the city actually begins its consideration of the project plan, and it does that by considering this resolution calling a public hearing on the project plan, such public hearing to happen in connection with the city's meeting on August 17. By statute, 30 days have to go by between the adoption of this resolution and the actual hearing on the project plan. And so that's why at this meeting tonight, we would be noticing up a public hearing for August 17. There are no other findings involved with this resolution regarding the project plan or anything like that. We simply just have to notice up the public hearing via resolution.
Any questions?
What would be the resolution number?
2905.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2905, establishing the date and time for a public hearing regarding the adoption and development project plan pursuant to KSA 12-1770 at 6:00.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Eyes have it.
Thanks, Mitch.
Thank you. So the next item is assignment of John K. Fisher agreement to Cody Foster. Who's going to handle this one?
Yeah. So in 2013, the city instituted a sales tax rebate agreement with the owners of John K. Fisher. The agreement was structured such that 75% of the portion of sales tax revenue generated by the dealership in any calendar year above the base amount of $60,000 would be remitted back to the owners of John K. Fisher. The agreement would sunset after 15 years from the effective date of the agreement or an extension thereof, or after the company received an aggregate rebate of $300,000. On June 1 of this year, Cody Foster, who I believe that, are you correct?
Yes.
Mr. Cody Foster purchased, acquired John K. Fisher. As a result, he has provided the city with a letter stating his desire to have that agreement assigned to him. The agreement provided that it could be assigned to someone if the dealership were sold. And so we are presenting this to you for your request. Presently, the sales tax comes to the city, but because of the way the sales tax is structured, the city doesn't actually use it for operations or anything like that. So the fiscal impact is pretty much zero. Those monies would be transferred into the city's Economic Development Fund, where it would be used for economic development purposes, such as this. And because this meets the definition of economic development as such, we feel it is an appropriate use of not only the funds, but also the assignment of the agreement. Incidentally, to date, the city has paid out a total of $90,448, or about 30% of the value, the aggregate value of the agreement. Therefore, about $209,552 are remaining. And on average, the city pays out about $12,921 a year based on prior sales. So if Mr. Fisher should be so fortunate to sell more vehicles, we will pay out more each year. And so then the term of the agreement would sunset much faster, but his success is our success, and so that would be good for both of us. The city attorney has reviewed it, and in her opinion, the city commission does have the ability to assign it after they determine that the assignment is the qualifications and financial responsibility necessary and adequate to fulfill the obligations of the agreement. Mr. Foster did provide a balance sheet that staff reviewed, and we are of the opinion that he fulfills those terms and conditions. And so we are recommending approval of the agreement, or the assignment, I should say.
For how many years?
Welcome to Eldorado.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
Good to have you here.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll go through a little brief spiel that I thought about all the way over here, if it's okay with the commission. As he said, my name is Cody Foster, and our legal business name is technically CBLR LLC, and the property is under a holding company of mine, CBLR Investments LLC. I'm from a little bitty town in Cisco, Texas. This is big town to me. Everybody welcomes me to their little community. It's not little at all to me. I'm used to driving 30 miles for fuel after 9 o'clock, because we don't have a fuel pump that takes credit cards in town. But I'm honored to be here, honored to be part of the community. I've been in the car business for about 20 years, since I was 18 years old. Family, it's not a family business for us at all. My father actually passed away when I was in high school, very young. I was raised by my mother. Started selling cars when I was 18, and it's the only place in town I could get a job when I was 18 years old, so I just kind of stuck with it. First group of dealers that I worked for died in a plane crash a few years later. We survived through that, survived through September 11, survived through the great housing debacle of 2008, and about three West Texas oilfield busts along the way. So we had some good years, had some terrible years, all in there together. But I was a, I ran six stores for a gentleman in West Texas, Lake Full and White Roto Group. I was his chief operating officer and chief financial officer for the last five years. And had 300 employees spread out across Texas, and to be honest, I just hated it. I liked being in one store with my team and managing business face-to-face instead of over email and text message, and it's just the way I liked it. So when this deal came up, I just, I thought it was a golden opportunity for me. I'm used to being in towns of 3,000 or 4,000 people with multiple competitors in town, so when I saw 13,000 or 14,000 people being pretty much the only, you know, the only new car franchise in town, I just thought it was too good of an opportunity to pass up. So we're doing well. We started off, I think last year the store averaged 12 or 13 units a month. We started off our first full month in June, we sold 41, tracking 78 this morning, so off to a really good July. We did close down the body shop, that was one of the first things we did. I'm just, I'm not a body person. I don't know how to do it. And assessments of the deal were about $250,000, what it was going to cost to really get the department to where it needed to be, and I just don't know how to do it. So we're planning on converting those 12 bays into service bays so that we can expedite our service experience and get all these cars through the dealership that we're planning on providing to the Eldorado and the surrounding community. So I'm just glad to be here. I'm humbled that a guy from where I'm from and what I came from can even stand before a commission like this in a town like this. I'm very humbled and very honored, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
What does GMC plan on building your inventory?
Oh, talk about a perfect storm. So me and Tony actually made an agreement on the deal in December, to buy the store in December. We were supposed to close May 1, and I could not, I'm sorry, April 1, and I could not obtain a dealer's license from the state because the department revenue was closed and not accepting applications during the COVID stuff. So I think there was some uncertainty on what was going to happen, and Tony didn't know if I was going to go through with it, and so I think he kind of wound down what he was ordering. And on top of that, General Motors started making ventilators instead of cars in the middle of all that, so they shut down all their manufacturing plants. So when I got here, I think we had 27 cars or something like that. We ordered, I think I've ordered 80-something cars over the last month, and we plan on keeping anywhere from 150 to 250 cars in stock. But it's going to be probably August before those units that I've delivered become available. But right now, we're just, you know, we're just working our tails off and getting trade-ins through the shop as quick as we can, getting them set up out there on the lot so that we can, we can get them back out on the street. But it's, you know, it's been fun. As my old partner used to tell me, "You only get to do some things once, and you only get to do this once, you know? It's only your first time, one time." So it's been, it's been quite an experience. We've had two lenders to use instead of 22, and 25 cars instead of 225 cars. We're going to get there, and to answer your question, a shorter answer, August.
Do you see maybe adding any jobs?
Yes, so we've already doubled our sales floor. We went from one salesperson to two. And to sell the amount of cars that we have in our forecast, which is 80 to 100 units, we'll need an additional five salespeople, which we, we have a stack of applications right now. We're just pretty, we're pretty selective in who we hire. We don't, generally, we don't hire people with automotive experience. We like people from a customer service background that don't have any of the habits that people get at other dealerships. I know a lot of people say that, but we really are, full disclosure, we show you all the numbers upfront. We don't apply pressure on anybody, so it takes a little while to sift through all those applications and find people that are happy with that system of selling. But right now, we have four technicians, and we just promoted Chad Gray, who's been doing detail for us, to technician, so we'll have five technicians then. Hired another gentleman to take his job in detail. And once we get some new lifts installed where the body shop was, then we'll be looking for five additional technicians, another service supervisor, and another parts supervisor. So we'll go from 17 employees, hopefully, to around 30 within the next 18 months. That's kind of the sweet spot in the stores I've been in, is about 30 employees.
Tony still there?
Ma'am?
Is Tony still there?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am, Tony is at his house, I guess. He's retired.
Retired?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Summer is still with us, who is married to Kevin, who is the other owner of the store. She's working in finance for us, running a business office, and doing a great job for us. We're happy that she stayed. I brought one guy with me from West Texas, his name's Court Pike. He's our general sales manager, and he's doing a great job. His daughters are playing softball here in league softball, so we're happy he's here. For the time being, I'm traveling. I left the house at 3:00 this morning. I'm traveling back and forth, driving up on Mondays from Texas and driving home on Friday nights, so.
We need to get you up there.
I'd love to be here. Compared to dusty West Texas town, this is incredible. I mean, I've already talked about the fuel problem we have out there, but right now, my 10-year-old daughter has the same fourth grade teacher that her grandmother had, so she's, we're dug in pretty deep. Hopefully, hopefully we migrate as time moves on. But I'll be, I'll be up here five days a week, irregardless, and my wife's up here about every week.
We've got some great teachers and brand-new schools.
Sure. I don't doubt that a bit. I don't doubt that a bit.
Sir, I predict you will do well here.
Well, thank you. I'm looking forward to it. You're the first person that's told me that. Everybody else just wishes me luck.
I'll go out on limb. You will do well.
Well, thank you. I look forward to serving the community. Any other questions? 2670 West Central, if you need to know.
Gotcha.
Meant to start with that. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome to town. Okay, with that being said, I would entertain a motion.
Resolution number, please.
2906.
I move to approve resolution number 2906, a resolution assigning the John K. Fisher Buick GMC Cadillac dealership sales tax rebate agreement dated February 4, 2013, to Cody Foster Motors Buick GMC Cadillac.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Eyes have it. And last but not least, Tennessee Court, Tennessee Court Bond Issuance Charter Ordinance. Who's got this one?
I'll take this one. Well, a number of months ago, I talked to Scott and David about the possibility of financing the tennis center that was constructed. It was already in progress of being built or already had been built, but one of the ways that we've identified to go ahead and do that with a new public building is to pass a charter ordinance that's chartering out of a specific state statute with respect to cities and public buildings. It is charterable, we've used it before. In an essence, what you're able to do is pass that charter ordinance, and then you would be able to issue bonds to finance those costs without having to go through an election in order to do so. So our charter ordinance that we typically draft up will put a number of options in there, in that the commission can do it by a simple resolution. Once the charter ordinance becomes effective, it can make it subject to notice and protest if it chooses to do so, or it could put an election requirement before it would go ahead and actually issue any bonds to recoup those expenses that it's already paid for in constructing the building. So all that's baked into the charter ordinance. Like I said, we have used it before, so we know it works, which is always a good thing. And that's basically just about it. It's a charter ordinance for public building improvements.
Any questions? Do we have a charter ordinance number?
24.
Okay, there's no questions, I entertain a motion.
Does she have an ordinance number?
24.
24.
A charter ordinance.
I move to approve charter ordinance number 24, a charter ordinance exempting the city of Eldorado, Kansas from provisions of KSA 12-1736, and providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to public building improvements and the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying for said improvements.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Young is absent. Vice Mayor Matt Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Willis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Items for discussion, advisory board updates or commission topics. Start always standing there with you.
My advisory board meets next Wednesday.
Library Board has not met. Library board has not met, but the library is requiring masks. Unless you just absolutely positively don't want to wear one, and then they ask you again, I guess.
Right.
But uh, I think they just started doing that. Hopefully, that'll work out for them. That's all I have. And it is, I say this every year, uh, they're calling for heat indexes in excess of a hundred and five this week, and actual temperatures actually in excess of a hundred and five towards the end of the week. Keep an eye on your neighbors, especially your elderly neighbors, and keep an eye on the animals that are outside. Just make, I mean, and really, folks, if you see an animal outside and there's no shade and doesn't look like there's a pan of water, or either or, pick up the phone and call. Call, call animal, call Public Works and ask for animal control, because that's, there's no reason for that. That's all I got.
Well, we had a a webinar meeting with Inc. and just talked about the budget. That's all we talked about on the webinar, so I really don't have nothing to talk about.
Um, I received a phone call today um, regarding the fireworks. Not a typical complaint about fireworks. Um, it was more along the lines of apparently, um, Tony went down and visited them, um, looking concerned about the grade of fireworks. Um, she had, she had discussed that maybe that the fireworks had, the classes of fireworks are different than what, than what our ordinance allows for, um, as time is going on and whatnot. Made sense. I I can't, I couldn't find, you know, I, I think ordinance was in ninety-one or ninety-nine. I can't remember which one. Um, but I would just wanted, maybe we should kind of look at that and see if like the 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 actual classifications of the fireworks um, is has changed since our ordinance. Maybe there there's a loophole that some stuff that shouldn't be allowed is allowed. But if it's been, even if it's been nineteen ninety-nine, it's probably time to review that, see if fireworks.
I I think we still allow Class C fireworks, which is what's sold in the stands. To purchase Class B fireworks, which are what you see at the shows.
Right.
Requires a license, a federal license, a background check and um, but there are lots of folks around with Class B fireworks licenses.
The same lady called me, and she was also concerned about the trajectory of, and how far some of these fireworks go. You know, landing in backyards and the fire problem and and from what I understood from her, she lived about a block from where the main shooting off was.
There there were people on Pine Street shooting off. She lives on Pine in Central. Right. She lives right.
Central and Summit.
Right in there. And there was, there was someone behind her on Pine, just a few blocks down that had, that.
There were Class B, I, I had a Class B fireworks license for years.
Right.
And I'm pretty familiar with them. There were a lot of Class B fireworks in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
Those are the ones practically those?
I mean, you you can tell from the lift charge that it's a Class B firework.
I just wanted to bring that up. Maybe it'd be something that we, you know, before next year, um, take a look at. And that, um, that's all I have. City manager.
So just a few things. Um, sales tax, we continue to track pretty closely to last year's uh, record-breaking sales tax collections. Um, it goes without saying that it's kind of a, it's kind of an awkward statistic, because we can, we know that certain businesses, particularly those in downtown, are struggling um, amid this pandemic, but uh, last, this last uh, sales tax, the city received two hundred and twenty thousand six hundred seventeen dollars in sales tax. Now that's from sales tax collected in April. Um, but we're only point six percent lower when compared to receipts from the same period a year ago. Um, we're projecting to bring in about two point six three million dollars for the year, based on this this trend. Uh, and to give you some comparison, uh, last year we brought in two point six eight million dollars, so just a little under that. The city made its annual O and M payment to the Corps just this past week. Uh, the payment totaled one hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars compared to two hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars from a year ago. This year's payment was just slightly higher than the four-year average of a hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, uh, but we we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars uh, for O and M expenses every year.
Why was last year so high?
Uh, it's all based on what the Corps does for operations and maintenance. Um, so they probably did some projects that were a little higher in price or more expensive, rather comparatively, and as a result of that, that gets divided up that way.
Okay.
Um, staff will soon be wearing masks while on duty as a way of doing its part to discourage the spread of coronavirus. Uh, the city encourages the public visiting useful facilities to also wear a mask. Let's try this. Although it will not be required, uh, since Butler County opted out uh, of the governor's executive order requiring masks, but we're gonna ask our staff to wear them, uh, not only while they're in facilities, but while they're at and about, particularly where they can't easily social distance. Um, but if they're on the construction site, uh, we're going to ask them to social distance as best they can, because given the temperature will be pretty high, um, if they can do that, uh, they'll also have the ability to uh, put a mask on very quickly, um, if people are approaching or if the situation warrants. So we're gonna try to do our part to facilitate that. Um, in addition, the city is very appreciative to all those who helped with the July fourth celebration fireworks this past weekend. We are especially appreciative to Freddy's for helping sponsor the event by providing frozen custard treats for attendees. As a reminder to the commission, we'll meet again on Wednesday, July eighth, to continue our discussions for the budget for the next, for the next year, twenty twenty-one. Um, and finally, the city of Augusta has requested negotiations begin with Eldorado concerning renewed long-term wholesale water agreement. The current agreement expires in twenty twenty-four, and Augusta would like to complete negotiations on that renewed contract so that it may commence negotiations with Moldane. Uh, Augusta sells Moldane water, and so they can't proceed with that negotiation until they're done with our negotiation. Uh, presently, the city sells Augusta approximately five hundred seventy-five million gallons of raw water annually, and we receive about three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year in revenue from that uh, transaction. Augusta sells a portion of that water to the city of Moldane for its domestic water needs, so that'll be starting up here very soon um, as well. And that's all I have. Questions or?
We have an approximate head count on people that came to see the fireworks at Mac?
So I believe the approximate head count of folks inside the stadium was between thirty and forty people. Uh, the parking lot adjacent to the stadium seemed to be relatively full. And I know there were a number of parking lots surrounding the stadium, like for example, city halls and the YMCA's, that also had people watching as well.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three, exactly. Incidentally, the uh, there was one malfunction. You may have, if you were watching the fireworks display, at least one or two malfunctions where they shot a little lower than what was anticipated, so.
Always exciting.
Always exciting.
Okay. Is that it, David?
That's all.
Okay. Looks like that's it. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. We are adjourned.